And call the meeting to order. And so we'll actually start off right away with announcements. And we have some excellence in teaching awards, the Greenspoons.
Yes, I'd like to call Megan Sullivan up to the front and recognize Megan. Megan, who's with you?
This is my mom.
Her mom Irene is here. Megan is the recipient, turn this way. Megan is the recipient, excuse her back for a second so the cameras can see her. Megan is the recipient of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Award. As you know, every year the Superintendent's Association recognizes somebody, a student from each of the school districts for excellence in leadership in academics and being able to show stewardship. And she was selected from the senior class. And she'll be, she has received a certificate. She'll be getting dinner and recognition at Pathfinder as well with her whole family and Mr. Cavalo and all the other recipients from the Hampshire County. So I wanted, you know, I won't, unfortunately, won't be available that evening. I will be unavailable, but Mr. Cavalo and her family and other folks as well will be there. And I wanted to be able to be here too before I leave to be able to recognize her here.
Good job, Megan. Congratulations.
Excellent.
Very proud, mom should be very proud. She said, you want to tell the school committee what your hopes and aspirations are for school?
I'm going to be going to Amherst College. I'm going to play basketball there. They're a Division III school.
And you're thinking of medical school, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking pre-med right now. I'm not entirely sure, but that's the plan for right now.
Pretty awesome.
Good point, excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Greenspoon?
Yes, and we also have Greenspoon recipient. And we have two, our two Greenspoon recipient awards are, oh my gosh. I know, Sarah McNutt, I know. I remember the other, Tracy Mayo, sorry.
Tracy Mayo.
Mayo, sorry, Tracy Mayo and Sarah, Sarah I knew because Sarah was over here. And this is Sarah McNutt. I'm from West Street School and Sarah's a special education teacher. And Tracy Mayo from the high school. Tracy Mayo unfortunately had a family commitment and was unable to be here tonight. But we were able to give out our Greenspoon awards. As I'm hoping folks know, Greenspoon, Mr. Greenspoon gives out the $500 monetary award. There is a reception at the log cabin every year for all the recipients, both in Hampden, Hampshire, Franklin County, for teachers across all the districts, for quality teaching, quality instruction. And you could not agree more, both for Tracy and for Sarah. And Sarah was taken up by surprise when we went to give her the award.
Great surprise, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for coming out today.
And Sarah, is there anybody here with you tonight?
No, just me.
And her principal.
And her principal, yes. And all her children were really excited about it. And when I said that she was receiving $500, one of their children went, "No!" I felt like that commercial, "And that's not all!"
They started compiling their lists of what I should use money for.
Okay. Our next item is our interim superintendent. And I would like to take a few minutes here just to introduce Dr. Judy Hul and welcome her here in Granby. And thank you very much, Granby. Thank you very much, Judy. I don't know if you have a few words or...
Other than just I'm really excited for this opportunity and excited to be here in Granby. I've already done some work with a lot of you. So we'll just kind of continue on and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Kathy, do we have any visitors signed in?
No.
Okay. And our next one is our student rep report. And right at this point, Annabelle cannot make tonight's meeting. Correct, Emery, and she has a conflict. So we'll get that full report next month. Moving on, I actually want us to take a break here in order to, as we've been going through recognition and everything, I would really like to recognize Dr. Rodriguez, our superintendent for the past four years. And so, Dr. Rodriguez, as you are aware, all careers have peaks and valleys. I hope you look at your four years here as a peak in your career and remember Granby fondly. Through your guidance and leadership, you have been able to move the district forward through creative budget planning during very difficult times. We've had an expansion of technology, expansion of the use of surveys. I don't know, Dr. Hul might really tip the bucket here though on the use of surveys. We have an MSBA elementary school project moving forward, a new roof at East Metal School. You've built a new administration team, all working closely together for the same goals in putting students first. Purchased a new security system. We now offer non-tuition-based full-day kindergarten. And this, as you know, has been asked for for many years here in Granby. You've had the expansion of the lunch program to offer breakfast, expansion of AP courses. Also Jonathan has changed from block schedule to period schedule. You've been a advocate for curriculum alignment with new material. You've shared vision of the DIP and the SIP, District Improvement Plan and the School Improvement Plans. And you've also been an advocate on offering professional development. As a school committee member, I definitely want to thank you very much for your four years. I've summarized this, I'm sure there's things I've definitely missed. But thank you very, very much. And I think we have a cake and some flowers, right Kathy?
You got your cake! Thank you very much. Hot chocolate.
Thank you very, very much.
Take your time. You're not going to leave with the cake, right?
She's definitely not going to leave with the cake.
Thank you very much. Beautiful cake. Thank you very much. I do have some closing remarks within my presentation, but it's been a real pleasure, you know, working here in Granby. It's been an honor to represent the students and faculty and the school committee as your superintendent. To hear what you've said, you know, in my presentation, I said I spent a lot of time reflecting. And it has been that these past couple of days in particular, we, in particular, has been much more emotional as I begin to tie loose ends and close, begin to close things. It's become much more emotional. And I've asked, begun to say to people, "Please be patient with me because it's going to be very difficult." It is getting more and more difficult as it goes on because of the friendships I've made and the children and the adults that I've come to love and become very close to my heart. So it's been a pleasure and certainly more peaks than valleys.
Thank you very much. As long as you're willing to cut it and serve it. And we're actually going to go into executive session. With the move, yeah, with the, to move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2 and 3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, interim superintendent. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation, as such discussion in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body. An executive session is necessary to protect the bargaining or litigation position of the body. The committee will be returning to regular session. Full call?
Emery, I've an eye.
Jim Peters, eye.
Mike Wasn't, eye. Okay, into regular meeting. And so our next item is approval of meeting minutes from February 4th in February 11. So could I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of February 4th separately.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Actually, I'm sorry. I'm one of, very minor Kathy, I'm one of them just because their record. Instead of my last name, you have my first name. It says Mr. Emery somewhere. No, second, don't worry about it. You know, I'm just, yeah, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, meeting minutes from February 11.
I'd like to motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 11, 2015. Second?
Any discussion?
No?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on, disposal of surplus property. So this is something that we've been doing quarterly?
Right, yeah. Well, actually, we were going to do it twice a year, but because leaving, I didn't want to put anything that I had approved previously. So from this point forward, Dr. Hul will take on that role. This is surplus computers property that David has asked and I've approved. So I'm just looking for approval to dispose of surplus hardware.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve for disposal of surplus property?
I move to approve the disposal of surplus property.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Do we know roughly what it is? Do we have any?
It's going to be, a lot of it is computer equipment that has failed this year. That most of it was computer equipment that had been donated to the school quite some years ago that served us for quite some years. And as the year went on, we had several units fail. They were replaced with more current donated equipment. So that's the bulk of it. And the other part of it is with the new, with the new phone systems that had been installed at the high school and at the West Street School and some upgrades to the PA systems. There are some old phone parts and PA parts that are, that are also earmarked to go out the door as well.
Dave, I know we ask you this question at least once a year, but how do we dispose of these things? Do we have a company that we...
Yeah, there's a company, there's a couple of different companies I've been using. It usually, I usually, it depends on which ones available and willing to come out here. And they take the equipment and they dispose of it in a legal, appropriate manner. Usually if it's a hard drive, it either gets shredded or melted, which destroys it. And then the other materials are either broken down, recycled, or properly disposed of. On one occasion, there were some parts, I think maybe some motherboards or something, that still had some value to them. So they actually sent us a check for like $400 or something like that. But always ends, it either ends up where we get a small amount of money for the equipment or it becomes cost neutral. And the cost neutral is important because many times we're disposing of a lot of the old-fashioned CRT monitors. And a lot of schools have to pay a considerable amount of money. I mean, schools have paid thousands of dollars to dispose of large amounts of CRT monitors. We have never paid for that because of the arrangement we have.
Do we punch a hole through the hard drives and stuff before we dispose of them or...
If the hard drive, if it's a classroom computer, I usually don't. I leave it up to them to melt it down. If it's an office computer, I try to do some type of data wipe or a physical destruction. But they are required, they are required to sign a document certifying that they will destroy the media or destroy the data using a method approved for removal of confidential data from government computers. That's in the document they sign before they take it from here. And then they send us a certificate afterwards certifying that it was done.
Any other discussion? Thank you, David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Update, Superintendent Surge, March 16th, presentations from the vendors. So we'd like them scheduled for 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock that night.
6:00 and 7:00 o'clock at night? Okay, so an email has gone out to both Nezdek and NASC. And we're waiting to hear back. We've asked for them to get back in touch with us by the end of this week and asked for them to be available, see if they'd be available on the 16th. So as soon as we know, we'll let you know.
Okay.
I wasn't here at that meeting. Do you have a liaison, somebody that you're, from this committee or that you're looking to act as a key person?
I will do that. If they want to contact me or Kathy can let me know and I'll touch bases in it. So we can take that off your, you have enough to do here, I think, too. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. So we're all set on that?
Okay.
Okay, next thing is our first read of this policy. It's the acceptable user policy for technology.
And yes, it has gone through Fred's office. He read through it. And so it's gotten his seal of approval. So it is for Wi-Fi access. And so it is for your read and approval for next month.
And most of it has been a policy already for quite some years. It's Section E, that is the new section where we requested that.
Right, we highlighted it.
Yeah.
So does anyone have any questions on the first read? If not, we will bring it to the school committee again in April.
Dave, just a question on number 10 under it. Where talk students may never physically connect a personal device to the school's network. In other words, da-da-da, unless authorized in writing. So there's a system where they'd be writing to you to get approval to do that?
Well, the, it is highly unlikely that that would ever be necessary. What that refers to is a computer that becomes part of the network, like an office computer or a classroom computer, where it's actually connect, where it shares net, where it shares files on a network, shares network, shares, has access to the full network like any other computer. That is a much, a higher level connection than typical Wi-Fi connection. It would be very, right now, I mean, I can't look five years down the road. I mean, this could always be changed if it has to down the road. But right now, I can't imagine there being much need for this. And it becomes a security issue. So in the very rare situation where it would become necessary, we need to monitor and document. That's why that was written like that.
So David, since you brought that up, so what happens today if a student has a cellphone? Or even, so this policy is for our students, but if they have a cellphone and they plug it into one of our computers just to charge it? But when they do that, they get prompted, do they want to just charge the unit? Do they want to share files? Do they want to do whatever? So to me, that is a computer being plugged into our network. Am I wrong thinking that? And does that happen?
Yeah, I mean, I do see students in classes on occasion charging a phone. This was more specifically to connecting to a, joining it to the network domain. The difference being, and the best example would be a laptop computer. Someone brings a laptop computer in and if it has a professional version of a Microsoft operating system, which most of them don't, that people buy for home use. But if it did, and they tried to make it part of the school's network, that's what this is referring to. To answer your question about the cellphone more specifically, I'm not, you know, aware of if they're doing anything beyond charging it. We do, in the student handbook, there is language right now in the high school student handbook that students can only connect peripheral devices to a computer with the classroom teacher's permission. So the classroom teacher has the authority to say yes or no to that when students want to do that in a classroom.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. I apologize, I only read this today. I was away this weekend and meetings all weekend long, so I didn't get a chance to look at it. But this is truly my first read and all questions are based on my first read. One is, I don't know whether there is anything specific as far as when these devices can be used, whether there is a restriction to their, to the students' use during class or any other time. Number two, I think it's item two that says, "All use of personal attract devices must abide by all directives and restrictions issued by teachers and administrators." I'm assuming that means in addition to what the policy is saying and not to be in conflict with the policy that we have in place. So it should not be an arbitrary decision that may conflict with the policy. If there is a way for us to clarify that.
The intention of number two was to do exactly what, was to probably address the exact concerns you just mentioned, that a lot of the limitations or restrictions would be placed by a classroom teacher. If a classroom teacher was giving an exam or a test and to eliminate the possibility of cheating or plagiarism, may order students to turn off devices, put devices away. Maybe normally in that classroom, they would use these devices as part of the daily activity, but that particular day they would not. There may be other teachers who maybe feel that those, that devices are not appropriate or necessary for their classroom environment or for maybe the content area they teach in. So that teacher might say, "No, we're not, put those away. We're not using those." Where the other teachers would allow it. I think we wrote that so that teachers would, to convey to the students and to the educational community, that the teacher is in charge. The teacher is the one that's going to say yes or no.
And I know, Emery, some teachers, at least at the high school level, they allow cellphone use when they do surveys. So there are surveys that are done in the classroom and they do use their cellphones to respond.
And that makes sense. It's just that, you know, I did not, because it's a policy, I did not want the policy to read as if, we have a policy and we have allowances that may eventually contradict with what we're offering here. What we're saying is that the final permission depends on the teacher and whatever they are doing in that part of their classroom.
That was intended to empower the administrators and the teachers to make reasonable and appropriate rules for the classroom or whatever. And, you know, in technology, there's things that are constantly changing. There might be some kind of concern, there might be a concern two years from now that's not a concern now. And, you know, maybe the principal might inform the teachers of it and say, "Make sure that students do this or they don't do this." And that allows that.
And thank you. And I have one final thing, just a suggestion. The last one, number 12. At the end it says, you know, if violated, if there are violations, it may result in the loss of use of the device, Wi-Fi in school and/or disciplinary action. I was wondering whether we might want to say the loss of the privilege to use so that it's not, doesn't, because sometimes I know that in some classrooms, teacher tell the students to deposit their devices in a vocation, in a bucket or something like that, so that this doesn't get interpreted as if the teacher is taking possession of the device. We're basically telling them, "Look, you violated whatever policy we have. You will not have the privilege anymore to be able to log on and use our network." Did we clarify that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was, that was brought before the school committee for a first reading. Thank you, Emery and Jim. And we'll have the second and the final reading in April. Okay, moving on to our next item.
TMS?
Yep, TMS. Archie?
Okay. You did get the results of the operations as of February 23rd. We have a more clear understanding of the governor's nine C cuts for Granby. The kindergarten grant reduction was reduced $7,140. And circuit breaker was also reduced $5,593. For a total reduction of $12,733. And in looking at the various line items, this reduction is reflected in the increase in the deficit that we're showing for FY15. Presently, we're reviewing all the grants, salary volume counts, and all the local budget line items, looking at the historical perspective to try to address part of this deficit. And right now, as you can see from the, from the line item budget, we're looking at a deficit of $100,000.
So I can, one of the things that, I did meet with Gail, we met, and we were able to take care of the kindergarten quality grant deficit within the kindergarten grant itself so that the appropriation budget is not going to have to absorb that deficit. We actually shifted within the grant some of those, some of those, those changes by reducing professional development requests in the grant. I was able to absorb some of the deficit into some of the title grants, Title I and Title II. So actually, we will not have to absorb the $5,000, but that doesn't take care of the other, or the $7,000, that is. So that doesn't take care of the $5,000 deficit in circuit breaker.
So the $100,000 that you mentioned, we already have an $8,5000 that we are going to a special meeting for. And about, what, $13,000 or so coming out of this one? So that's the $100,000.
But seven of that, but seven of that, he didn't take into consideration what we were able to...
No, he didn't have to take that into consideration.
So there's about $6,000.
So these unexpected nine C cuts impact this year?
Yes, they do.
So people need to understand that it's, that we accounted for this money because we were under the impression that, you know, that was all part of our budget.
That's right. That's right.
And then unfortunately, we did end up getting these nine C cuts.
Right, and so what we're currently looking at is $7,000 in kindergarten quality and $5,000 in circuit breaker. We were able to shift things around in Title I and Title II and in the kindergarten quality. What it means is that we have less to play around with for professional development, some consulting, some contractual expectations that we, both Gail and I were thinking of doing for the future within the school year is not going to happen. So that will reduce our budget by that amount, but it won't, it won't impact appropriation. It just means that we're going to have to reduce our budget. What we had originally anticipated, which was to bring in somebody, for example, in the spring for our evening family outreach for kindergarten quality, that's not going to happen. Some professional development, reimbursement for teachers for kindergarten quality, some of that's not going to happen. Some of it is going to happen through Title I. And so that, it's, we're shifting it. So it's not going to come out of the general appropriation, but it's going to be shifted into Title I.
And...
These figures we have, is this through February?
February, as of February 23rd.
February 23rd.
So just, you know, asking the same question every month, but I think it becomes more important. These are all unexpected hits that we got the last so many times. And, you know, it added up to close to $100,000 by now. I asked you the question last time, but just if you don't mind, do, since we are at the beginning of March, do we see any possibility of some good positive news coming our way and maybe going in the other direction? Or it's too late for that type of optimism now?
We got cake tonight.
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you a Democrat or Republican?
Up for the budget right now, so...
So Archie, I do have a question on your report. You said in addition, the issue with snow on the roofs is being addressed. So, in that you've contacted some roof companies. So can you give us an update on this?
We have contacted some roof companies and as of yet, they have not gotten back to us with any kind of pricing, which is what we've asked for. gotten back to us with any kind of pricing, which is what we've asked for. Uh, how long and how much to, uh, remove some of the snow. Uh, the wind is helping us, uh, but...
And the sun.
Not that strong, though.
Yeah, and...
The part of the problem is, I actually got a call from one of the roofing companies on a Saturday at 6:30 at night, uh, getting back to me, and, uh, it's just, they're all straight. They're, they're working seven days a week, 16 hours a day, you know, they're... But, uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that we're going to have a price, I was hoping for today, but we'll see tomorrow.
Okay.
Even though it's very quiet, we had any leaks at all, anywhere?
We had a...
Some window, yeah.
Yeah, we, well, we have, we've had some leaks in the windows, and we did have a leak at East Meadow that was not related to the snow on the roof, but as to, um, the ceiling, the sealant on the roof at East Meadow that Titan is already coming out to, to deal with.
I would hope too. I think I, maybe they should get some of the snow away from the front of East Meadow, too. There's a lot of snow right up above the windows there.
And some of it was cleared already.
Some of it cleared already.
Yeah, we had, um, I know that there were a few people up there and they were clearing it already, and then I, like, blow, like, today, we were in the library for our staff meeting and it, it was blowing against the windows more, you know, so like, depending on where it goes.
So with, um, another storm coming in tomorrow night supposedly, and followed by rain, uh, how concerned should we be? And...
I have had several conversations with Mr. Scully, he's aware of it. They have cleared the drains, so that, um, with the melting, it should be go, the, it should drain, um, well, um, according to Mr. Scully. Um, and he felt that, um, with the wind, a lot of it is being blown off. Um, he did share with me and, uh, some memorandums from OSHA that suggested that using our own custodians would not be safe, which is why I've asked, um, uh, Archie to get in touch with companies. I've been in touch with our town inspector and with Mr. Martin around, you know, support if, because clearly if we're going to be utilizing contractors, it's going to cost us a pretty penny.
Right, but should our town inspector come to this, the buildings tomorrow, before the next storm?
No, they've already given, um...
Knowing that there's going to be more...
Russ has already given us his opinion as to what should be done.
Okay.
But I can certainly ask him to come back out.
Well, I'm just wondering if they, what has to be done, but does it need to be cleared before our next storm?
He recommended that the drains be cleared minimally, and which is what, uh, Ken did.
Okay, okay.
I have a follow-up.
Yeah?
Just to follow up on the previous question, uh, to make sure that I understand, the five or $6,000 for, uh, nine C. Uh, there is a highlighted line in the summary, uh, that we have here, and it says that the claims filed less than budgeted, uh, note that six C cuts as of now do not impact this program. So that was some of the good news that I was hoping for, but, yeah. No?
That, I believe that, uh, was in there. I think that was in last month's. I don't think that would change that.
So it doesn't apply anymore?
I don't believe so, no.
Any other questions at this point? If not, I'm going to go into the written reports. Okay.
Thanks, Archie.
Thank you, Archie. So now we have, um, the next item are the written reports, so, um, I'll just start really quickly and just say, any questions for, um, East Meadow School? Actually, I should start with the high school, but Jonathan's not here.
I think you're good.
Oh, oh, Allison's here. Um, so any questions for Allison at this point?
I actually have a very quick question. Hopefully it is very quick. The, um, other learning results, the first one related to AP classes. So there was a meeting with guidance, guidance counselors and six students who are, I'm assuming, interested in AP classes, but, um, to review the AP exam schedule, what was the outcome of that? Was it really to determine collectively what the schedule should be?
It was to give, to outline all the information that students that are currently enrolled in AP classes, so they knew what the next steps were to, um, signing up for the AP exams that will be happening this spring. So they need to let guidance know by, I believe it's by this Friday, whether they are, in fact, taking the exams for the classes they are currently assigned, signed up for now, currently taking now.
So they, they did not make that decision yet, that they will?
Correct.
Okay.
And hopefully they'll all be taken, right?
Yeah.
Hopefully they'll all be taken.
We're hoping.
Because I think John, John referred to that as one of those discrepancies that we have in our, uh, metrics, that we have a lot of students who want to take advantage of AP classes, but some, for some reason, some of them don't take the exams. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. If no other questions, I'm going to move on to East Meadow School. So, poor Jen, any questions?
Good effort on those conferences, but the numbers didn't come out like...
No, so we, as you know, we added in that the second conferences, we hadn't had those, um, for quite some time. And, um, it came basically out of a survey that I did last year, where parents were interested in possibly coming back. I want you to also keep in mind that these are optional conferences, so they could have been requested by the teacher, they could have been requested from the staff. Um, at a staff meeting today, we kind of discussed them, um, and we're looking at, would it make more sense educationally to go down to a, to one event, one half-day versus the two? Um, we're comparing our information with West Street. Um, basically, we want to make sure that we're using the time wisely. Um, there wasn't a lot of families that attended. However, especially with the fourth and the fifth grade teachers, for the, um, parents that were invited to conferences by the teacher, a great amount of them came, the majority of them came. Um, however, there just wasn't a lot, and, and one of the comments by the teacher said, "At this point in the year, if a student is struggling, we are constantly having conversations with the teacher, with the parents, and we're reaching out, and they're, they're in such close contact with the families already, that sometimes there's not always that need for the conference, and the parents didn't, you know, want to take that time off of work or whatnot." Um, so we're still looking at it. I was a little disappointed with the numbers as well, though.
It was one, it was one of the things we talked about in our admin meeting as well, um, because, as you know, it was one of the items that we addressed at, at summer workshop. Um, we also were talking about whether or not, because of all those snow days, that parents were feeling like they were taking so many days off as well to be home, that it was also something difficult for them to take, yeah, another day.
Right, but it's, I know it's a lot of work on both your parts and the staff to do that, but regardless of the numbers, I'm sure those who came in still found that very beneficial and helpful, and that's the key thing.
Exactly, and I'm not, and I'm not proposing that we get, do away with it at all, but I think one of the questions that came up was, were you really using both, it's two half-days, were you really using that time, or could that be consolidated into one day? Was kind of our conversation that we had.
Right, it's always tough. Then you, you put it into one day, and then you say, "God, I could have used two days."
Exactly, exactly.
You do the best, and you go with it, and hopefully the, those who came for conference...
It was, it was very valuable for those.
Very valuable, that's right.
Yep.
Thank you for evaluating the data and coming up with a go-forward plan.
Well, and I do have to put out there that, you know, one, one of the teachers commented today that she, because usually conferences, the first round, they're 20 minutes for each, each parent, and she said, because she didn't have as many, she actually met with each of the parents for about 45 minutes. Um, and so it was a really valuable time.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to West Street. Uh, any questions for Deb?
No, just my same comment, that thanks for taking the time to do those, and for those teachers. You know, they gave us some time, but hopefully it was well worth it, and...
And I think it was as valuable for parents to be able to have that time to spend with the teachers, and the ones who came in thought, like, they were wonderful, they had good conversations.
Yeah, I guess, you know, we had this conversation or a similar conversation before, how do we let other parents who, uh, weren't there, uh, know that these are valuable conversations? You know, whether their experience, their students' experience is positive or not so positive, they still can engage in a good productive conversation with the educators, and this is the time and environment to do it, so, but thank you, thank you both for that.
Thank you, and that's what, when, when we were talking about it, too, I didn't want to throw it out just yet, and, and say, "Let's, let's, um, stop it," because I said, you know, maybe people are just getting accustomed to this new idea, and let's try to give it one more year, maybe think about possibly other options other than two half-days, maybe see if there's some way we can maybe look at an evening, but, but don't, let's not throw out the whole idea yet, because I think parents don't necessarily think about this as an, as an option just yet, for, for them, if their child isn't in trouble.
Yeah.
And to Deb and Tom for moving that classroom. I know that was under the staff, I'm sure it'd make that classroom work.
Couldn't have happened any sooner if it's water is down there.
What a good time. And the new phone system, embassy?
Yes.
It must be a nice, nice...
It is, there's learning for some of them, yes. The light is flashing, and so I go in and get rid of the light.
Needs to have a message.
So I, I have a question about the undermined section of pavement.
I knew that was going to be a question.
And so how large is the playground is this, and is it a safety concern?
This began as just a crack in the pavement, and, and what I originally thought it was, was just a frost heave, but they're everywhere. And then we noticed that the crack decided to do this, and there was a significant drop to that playground pavement.
Is that where the drain is there? That's where the drain is?
It is, no. Uh, the drain is over further. It's where the, um, our sub-pump is emptying the warm water outside, and so it's eroding underneath, and now we have a hole, it's about this big out there.
You better hurry up and build a school.
Maybe you dump the warm water up onto the roof and melt it all.
That is a really good idea, Jeff.
Yeah, it'll start coming in the classroom.
Don't please. We can't move quick enough on a school.
I know, yeah, we're trying.
So how much of a risk is this, and how, um...
We're, we're assessing it right now.
We are. Uh, Ken said as long, they have it taped off, um, students don't go anywhere near that area. It's the area where the tank fill is in the middle of the playground. It's closer to, um, the entrance to the basement going down into our boiler room. So it's over that way. Kids do not play in that area. Um, it's all taped off, we're not letting them anywhere near it, and Ken said there's not a lot we can do until we have some melt and get rid of that snow out there.
It can't hurt our chances with MSBA.
Really?
Until and unless the school goes down.
It validates the decision made to last building committee meeting.
Okay, moving on. Dr. Jefferson, any questions on, for Dr. Jefferson's? Okay.
We don't have Deanna in that very...
I know.
We're very excited about the inservicing that's going on.
Taking my presentation.
Reporting to you at meetings. It's great stuff.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, David, did you have a report, or are you...
I don't have a report, but I have been in touch with, um, the wonderful people that have helped us out in the past with computer equipment in the last couple of weeks, and, uh, they assured me that, uh, um, by sometime in the spring, May or June, I should have a couple of batches of stuff that will help us, uh, do our usual summer maintenance and upgrades and that kind of good stuff. So that's the, uh, that's the good news, and the other news, neutral news, is I'm working on the March state reports right now, and I'll hopefully have some numbers and, um, some data, uh, in April. Um, right now, I have, I'm all up to date on my stuff, but it's the state computer system from this point forward will dictate when we have all that stuff for you.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a quick question for Dave. Just curious, um, as time changes, technology changes, and the nature of donations change, I'm assuming along with that, you know, from CRTs, one, two...
They get better.
Do you see any time in the future that we may start receiving, say, tablets, uh, as opposed to desktops or laptops? Is there any, uh, possibility of that happening?
The, um...
Would you like to give us some?
Yeah, right.
I would love to.
One of the, one of the groups that has been helpful to us does give us laptops, and I suspect, um, I will be getting more of them this spring. Um, beyond that, when you start to, you know, the, the stuff that I don't see us getting, um, is stuff like iPads, and I think the reason is because iPads, um, hold a lot of value even when you get old. And I'm sure that, you know, if people can get $150 for something, they're not going to be handing it off to me, but, um...
But possibly e-readers and things like that.
Possibly, but the organizations I deal with tend to, at least at the moment, use a lot of the traditional, um, technology, desktops and laptops. So, um, one thing I do have a hard time getting is the, is LCD monitors. Um, we have been lucky, we did get enough to do, um, all, all of our, all but one of our computer labs in the district in some classrooms, and, um, what I, uh, the, the, the hope I have for the, for, for getting LCDs is, recall at the last school committee meeting, you talked about an energy audit, and I met the gentleman who was going around doing one of the energy audits, and I think he was going to put in his report something on, on replacing classroom computers, see if there's anything out there to help us get LCDs, because people will say that if you buy them, they pay for themselves in a couple of years or three years with the electrical savings, so, um...
Yeah, I was also asking, because John continuously brings up the fact that, you know, this is the 21st century classroom, and technology is going to play a, already is playing a, a very significant role, and if the donations change in that direction, and I said tablet, not obviously laptop and tablet, mobile devices in a way, right? Uh, whether in the future we might have an opportunity to have loaners, especially for the students who may not have a computer at home, so they can take advantage of technology.
We're, we're definitely, we're right on top of that. I mean, we, we are right on top of that. Um, you know, that's going to be an issue that's going to come in all schools. As a matter of fact, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education already has some statements posted on the website to that effect, that you have to provide, uh, not only for students that cannot afford them, but also for parents who, for other reasons, don't want to purchase them or can't purchase them. So that is something that, we're going to have to cross that bridge, and I'm aware of that, and I'm hoping that when we get there, I'll have what I need. Like I say, right now, uh, I do, I do get the laptops. Uh, one of the challenges with laptops, many times they come here, they, they come as great, they come with good memory, good motherboards and that, but the batteries need to be replaced. You know, batteries are like $100 at least each, so, you know, if you want me to have 50 loaners out there, you know, 50 times, you know, that's something we're going to have to talk about, you know, so...
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Emery, you're up. Anything on the collaborative?
No, because this is our off-month, Thursday.
You have an off-month?
Well, it's, every other month I have the collaborative meetings.
Okay. West Street building, any update, Jim or...
Well, we have a meeting Wednesday night, 6:30, and I think the agenda I've seen is that we'll be talking, talking with the architect and the opium about our three options, um, the new pre-K through three in front of East Meadow, the new pre-K in front of East Meadow, along with renovating East Meadow, or a new pre-K through six in front of East Meadow and leaving East Meadow go. So we're going to get more information on those three options.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We have a 10-minute superintendent report.
No, yeah, right. It's my last day, so last meeting.
Last meeting, not last day.
Last day, I wish, no, no, I don't. Freudian slip. Um, last meeting, so I told, uh, Michael that I could take as long as I want, and that's why I'm last. Um, I do have a...
So if anybody wants to leave.
And you're all stuck. Um, I do have a presentation, but before I go to the presentation, I do, the commissioner, um, of education has sent several, several emails, um, asking the superintendents to review the calendar, the school calendar. Uh, so I'm doing as I'm told, and, um, I'm just, I'm just bringing it forward. You already approved the calendar back in January, I think. Um, and the reason, I think it's more of an issue in Eastern Mass, but he has asked that we look at our calendars for next year to ensure that our calendars take into consideration, should we, you know, look at a, a situation for snow. Um, before I talk about 15, 16, for those viewers who are wondering, or if yourselves are wondering, we still have on the books two snow days.
Available.
Available, and then in addition to that, four more days before June 30th.
So right now, when's the last day?
Right now, we're looking at June 22nd. Um, and it's a Monday, and knock on wood, if... Yes, and I'm sure I just jinxed us, but if we don't have any more snow days, then we'll be getting on June 22nd. But if not, we still have two more days on the book and then if need be, we can also just go four more days through. So, we theoretically have six days to play around with between now, March 2nd through.
July 1st, right?
You know, June, you know, June 30th or whenever our last day of school is. So, I'm feeling pretty comfortable, but I just, you know.
Do hours come into play anymore?
Doctor Hul.
Do hours come into play anymore?
Not right now, the commissioner's not allowing us to look at that, so he really wants us to stay within the days. So, I, right now, I'm not recommending that we do anything with our calendar. I feel pretty confident that we should be able to handle it. What he has asked us to do is to look at our calendar for next year. We're actually in a very good place for next year as well. Our 180th day is June 14th with, if you may recall, after the October snow fiasco of my second year here, we started, I recommended and we continue to do, add six days instead of five days to our calendar. So, we are at June 22nd and then that, if you, we would add, June 30th gives us another six days after that. So, we are, we have actually a total of 13 days to play with at the end of the school year. I really think we don't really need anything more than that, however, however, if you note, and I, and I really, and I said this to Doctor Hul, if she were to be here all the way through to mid-year next year, but I'd like to say publicly and remind, ask the school committee to remember this, should you be in this position next year, I think that principals, school committee, administration needs to remind folks that the calendar does state, right, clearly, right at the beginning, if additional days are needed, April vacation will be touched and what we're looking at right now is to take Thursday and Friday of that April vacation. So, that still allows for folks to, should they want to plan an April vacation, Monday is a holiday, they can do Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and the school department is saying, we're gonna take, take the days and if you, if we're gonna be looking at days in April vacation banning a horrible disaster and hopefully we'll know that before, you know, March or 1st of April, we're gonna be touching April, Thursday and Friday of April vacation. So, don't plan on a vacation during that, those two days because school is gonna be held. Employees, don't do, plan on vacation because school is gonna be held and we're gonna expect you to have to come in on that, on those days and don't come telling us you, you have a flex on that during those time. And I, you know, I think that it's important that we communicate that now, we communicate it regularly, early on, frequently enough, so that, that people understand that that's our expectation should there be really some really horrible weather and then you're talking about 15 days, that's three school weeks. I can't remember where we really used three school weeks.
Right, but let me just emphasize that the school committee could decide as we're.
To do more.
Well, right, so I'm just saying, if we're approaching six days in, I'll say, January, we've already absorbed our six days or whatever, we might not be looking at extending our, our calendar, school year, we might be saying in January, February, we're gonna take those days in April right away. We don't have to go out through the end of June. As a school committee, we can decide that instead of keeping class in session till the end of June, we're gonna go back and take those days in April.
And I won't be here, so you can do.
No, 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 but.
There's contract.
There are contracts, there are contracts.
As long as you get by a certain date.
Yeah.
You have to do it by a certain day.
Right, right.
You would have to negotiate that, but, you know, basically, what I would like to do is to be able to communicate that all enough in advance.
Yep.
And for families.
Yeah, I would say definitely after this winter.
Yeah. And certainly, if you want to take the whole vacation and say, don't plan anything the whole vacation, but I, you know, I think that families do like that April vacation, do plan that April vacation, but as a school committee, if you want to do that right now and say, hold off and don't plan that whole April vacation because we might be touching that April vacation, I think the sooner you communicate that to families and employees, the better off you are and that's all I'm trying, I'm trying to suggest.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's perfect in that unreasonable, you don't need a vote on this, though.
No, no, no. That's, unless you wanna change the calendar.
Nope.
The way it is.
Nope. So, your next item.
It is my PowerPoint presentation. So, and I think you can, unless you, there we go, it's that way.
I can say thank you.
So, this is my final report to the Granby School Committee and what I wanted to be able to do is to give you a, thank you, no, that's okay, is to be able to give you a report of where I, where I stand. I've been able to spend some time having conversations with my administrative team and I wanted to be able to give you a status of where we stand, where I stand, where we stand with the district. I've divided up my report into four areas. The first area is curriculum and professional development. This week, we have our March 4th Professional Development Day, our last full day of professional development and given, my hope is that we will not have bad weather enough that we won't be having to cancel it. If need be, we will, if necessary, we'll do a one-hour delay, but otherwise, we will, should, and my hope is we'll be able to hold a full day. And we have District PD and differential, differentiated instruction, our second day of that. The special education staff and the paras will be meeting with TD Smith on communication skills and you heard Dr. Jefferson speak to, speak to that. And then we have several other curriculum days that will be site-based and focus on assessments and dealing with assessment and curriculum. I've been working all year, Jen has taken the leadership role to coordinate professional development and curriculum activities. I have met and will continue to meet until I leave to ensure that she is able to continue the vision that we have been working on all year long in this area and then she will then carry that work on with Doctor Hul. I've already, I met with Doctor Hul today and will continue to, we've already worked out a couple more days and will continue to work out a couple more days before I leave and then Jen will continue to work with her. Jen will work, I've already asked her, she'll, she and I are gonna be working on a new district professional development survey because of professional development survey that we, I had done previously, we've already addressed through our PD activities and it's time for us to do a new PD survey, professional development survey. She'll be surveying all the staff using the Survey Monkey that I've been using. She'll be working with our administrative team and our, and our teachers to continue the work on ELA assessment. We've, we've done a lot of work on the ELA curriculum, as you know, and it's been approved. The curriculum team will then now be identifying an assessment that will be aligned with the ELA curriculum. My expectation is, is that work will be done late this summer, early fall, rather than late this spring because they are now looking at potential, some newer activities and Jen will speak to that later on this spring. Our math assessment work will continue and we are, and I'll be speaking to it in a few more minutes, but we are also do, we've been doing some professional development in math. And I guess I'll speak to it, no, I thought I had another slide on that. We've been doing some instruction and professional development on implementing the math assessment and we actually will be bringing in folks from the vendor to ensure that we are doing it properly and we'll continue with that math assessment tool one more year and determine whether, how best to use it, whether we'll be using it as a DDM or as a method for, to inform instruction. So, Jen will be taking the lead on that, on that as an administrator and working very closely with Doctor Hul. In the area of instruction is the second area that we've been focusing on and I think that we've done some really good work in that in these past four years as I've done, as I've shared with you, as we've shared with you early this fall, we have actually done some great work, made some great progress in student growth percentile, both in ELA and math for all students. We've made some significant progress with our students with disabilities. Over the past four years, we've seen a 18% increase over, over the four years in ELA and an 11% increase in student growth percentile in math, but we still need some work in areas of particular, subgroups in particular, in math, in particular grades and so we'll be using our math, acuity math assessment to address that and we'll be looking at our DDMs as well. Doctor Hul has been working with, prior to even Doctor Hul being hired as our interim, I had contracted with Doctor Hul this year to work with our staff on DDMs, that's District Determined Measures, which is aligned with our evaluation tool and she has been doing work, she will be continuing to do that work in her role as interim superintendent and she'll be working closely with Jen, who has been working with team leaders as well. Doctor Hul has also been working with what we call our specialist groups, music, art, PE and I've actually been in touch with Hadley and Judy, myself and Annie. We've been talking these past several months to see if we can create a partnership, collaboration so that these folks who are singletons often could possibly collaborate and our hope is that we'll, we'll be able to continue that idea even though Judy is now gonna be in this position and no longer a contracted individual, so my hope is that that'll continue. Teach Point is an evaluation, computerized evaluation system that the principals have been implementing and working with the teachers. It's been taking the evaluation system and moving it on in a computerized system. We've been providing training throughout the year, strong support training around with the administrators and teachers and again, I look to contracting with Doctor Hul to provide that support and so it's again, you know, kudos to the school committee for hiring Doctor Hul because she's certainly gonna be able to ensure that that work is gonna continue now in her role as superintendent. In the area of instruction, what I'd like to point out is that, and I've already had these conversations both with Doctor Hul and the admin team, in particular, both Mrs. Barthollet and Ms. Champagne, one of the things that I, we've begun to have conversations around is looking at a new elementary report card. The current elementary report card that we have is not aligned with the new standards, so this is something that we need to think about or the district needs to think about in the very near future and we've begun to have those conversations already with our team leaders, I with my, with the administrators and I would, I would expect for you to see that that is something that you're gonna see in the very near future, if not by the end of this year, probably early fall, some conversations around that because the current report card is not well-aligned and that would have been something that I would have been moving our district forward in.
Is it both for West Street and East Meadow?
Yes, yeah, yeah. I don't, I was hesitant to put this up here because I'm not gonna be here, but knowing, knowing who's your interim and knowing my administrator's team, I'm betting that the next step would be, let's look at computerizing it the way we have it here and that would have been something that I would have loved to have kind of encouraged the administrators and the teachers to think about, but we have two schools, one that might be more ready for that than another and so I think that we have to be cognizant, or the district needs to be cognizant of that and think about how to work with the levels of readiness of our staff in that. But I think everyone is certainly gonna be ready to have that conversation about aligning the report card with the new standards and the new curriculum so that it can better reflect what it is that we're doing with our children and how they're, they're making the, how they're progressing academically. And then, how do we communicate it would be automatically the next conversation to have. In the area of contract and evaluations, again, this is something I've already had a conversation with Judy today about, all our administration, administrators' evaluations have been either completed or will be completed, the evaluations have been completed and new goals will, have been set or will be set before I leave, that is, the work has already begun and that my goal is to, to have that sealed and delivered so that Judy will be just dealing with, just, dealing with, working with the teachers, the administrators and supporting them in, in meeting their goals. Contracts are all up to date, administrators' contracts are all up to date, non-represented personnel contracts are for the most part up to date, as well as the representative units are settled and, and up to date as well, up through this year. You know, one of the things when I was having that conversation with, with Judy, depending upon when it, you bring on a, one of the things you need to consider, that I didn't put up here, but one of the things you need to consider is that depending upon how long it takes for you to bring on a new superintendent, a permanent superintendent, if you're going into fiscal year 17, you're gonna be walking into a lot of these representative units, contracts expiring or get, being to, in preparation to expire and that's something you wanna be mindful of when you're doing that. So, just a point of information. Community relations, I have tentatively set a goodbye to my friends at the senior center for my last, the last Monday that I, of my week, the March 16th. I've invited the administrators, those who might be available to come with me and I've also invited Judy, who says she's going to be available, so my goal is to say goodbye and introduce Judy as the new interim superintendent as well. And my, I've asked him if it would be possible to let me and the admin team serve them one more time before I leave. I just felt like I couldn't, I just couldn't leave without going out and I've really enjoyed going there every possible time that I could and I couldn't leave Granby without going out there and saying goodbye to them one more time before I left the town. My hope is that the senior center, West Street visits will continue under Mrs. Barthollet's leadership and I think it's very important and particular, you know, as I've pointed out before and I want to remind people that it's, you know, for me, it's been wonderful to watch the friendships and the relationships and you'll see that a little later on in my presentation. It's been wonderful to see that relationship grow between the West Street children and teachers and the senior citizens, but I think it's also important to remember that, one of the things that I heard pretty loudly when I first came here four years ago, that one of the larger populations of folks here in Granby that voted and necessarily didn't vote in favor of the high school project were the senior citizens and that my initial intent, although I ended up loving, you know, I, I just love going, what my initial intent of connecting West Street to the senior center was so that parent, so that families, sorry, seniors could see and have, build a relationship and a partnership with the center, with West Street so that there, when it came to us saying, would you be willing to commit a certain amount of your taxes, that they, they could put faces of children and faces of teachers when they were, you know, checking yes and not just an old building. So, I think it's important to remember that and when we think about, you know, whether or not that's important, it's very important. Mrs. Moriarty, Katie Moriarty, a former school committee member, has agreed to, as I've shared before, has agreed to continue to be our community liaison, to work with the schools and to try to figure out ways to reach out to the, to the school community. She's been a little bit, a little bit occupied with her home being rebuilt, but has said that she will continue to, try to continue to be our community liaison. As Jim pointed out, the West Street Building Committee is March 5th and Doctor Hul is gonna. that she will continue to, try to continue to be our community liaison. As Jim pointed out, the West Street Building Committee is March 5th, and Dr. Hul is going to make every effort to at least try to come and let me introduce her, and if not, stay and attend that meeting so that folks can, can actually come and meet her. I have met with and spoken to my principals and they will be aligning their school improvement plans with the current district improvement plan. While the school committee is still working through the strategic plan, the visions and goals, I think it's important while you work through your, your school superintendent hiring process, and this also gives the opportunity for the new superintendent to do her own entry plan and set new goals as well. And she'll come to you with probably some suggestions as well for a new district improvement plan. In addition, G-CAM, my hope is to set up a superintendent chat to introduce Dr. Hul with one, maybe one of my last, my last shows where I can say goodbye and introduce Dr. Hul. I've had an opportunity to speak with various reporters. I've set up, I make, monitor in each of the school sites so that our websites will continue to be updated. I've had an opportunity to visit various parent groups, I'll continue to try to do so. I've visited the booster pack. I'll be going to the Dr. Seuss night at West Street to be able to try to continue to get out as much as possible, although I think I've run out of nights. I think I have one night free left this week and one night free next week. So I, I think I'm running out of time, actually. And lastly, David and I, and I don't know if I'm going to be successful in doing this. My goal had been to get rid of our email system and update it to Google. I don't know if I'm going to be successful. I might end up having to throw that over to Dr. Hul, but I will, that, she will hear the frustration about our current email system, and that will be something that my hope is, if I can't get it done, she'll get it done, because David will make sure that it's pursued. So that's in the area of community relations. In the area of facilities maintenance, thank you, Michael, for pointing that out. You know, security project is fully implemented here at the high school in East Meadow. It's installed and we've had a couple of glitches at West Street, but we're in the process of working that out between Acuity and Mr. Sebula, and our hope is that it'll be shortly up and running. We have new phones in all three schools and it's really kind of exciting to think about it. We have updated Wi-Fi and network here at the high school in East Meadow, updated network at West Street. So we've got some really good things going on in the area of maintenance. We have the lab, the science lab here. We actually have a three, we have three-year maintenance plans I've gotten from all three schools. In the process of finishing up, my goal had been to get a district plan that I could show you tonight, just couldn't get that done, I apologize. But, but we will get done before I leave here, that I will then share and discuss it with Judy and you, we will, I will review it with Judy. It is a maintenance plan, not a capital plan, a maintenance so that it's understood what are the expectations around maintenance to support the schools and around typical maintenance for each of the buildings and expectations for custodians and director of maintenance. And of course, you know, as I've been doing here, the two-year capital plan, I'll make sure I review that, which brings me back to the capital projects. We had a meeting and the, I'll go through what was approved at the capital plan meeting and share the results of that and ensure that Judy follows through with the expectations. Budget planning. I met with the select board on February 17th, presented the supla, the supplemental budget request. There will be an article that will be brought forward to the March 9th town meeting. My hope is that we won't have any problem in getting an additional $85,000 from the special town meeting that will help with that money that we're looking at currently for this year.
So, excuse me, who's bringing that article forward? Is that the school committee or is that?
You know, I'll find out from Chris. I know that, I brought it forward to the select board, they did not ask me, they didn't say, Jim, did they?
Didn't say that, no.
Jim was there with me.
They just asked that you were going to be there.
Yeah.
You'd be there.
Yeah, but they didn't say, did they?
So we need to know who's going to present the article.
Jim was with me there.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
They didn't say. I'll find out, though. Unfortunately, during the February break, two days before the February 19th meeting, I found out there was a February 19th capital planning meeting and to review our capital plan requests. And we didn't know about that, and so I checked into it and when I was told, I was told that they were not going to give us, and both Jim and I checked into it, and we were told that we were not going to be given an opportunity to speak to it, that they were just going to review.
And they'll invite us when they're ready.
Well, guess what? They voted on it.
Oh, like I said, they didn't need us.
They didn't need us. I did ask John to go, John Cavallo to go, because they had already denied the technology request, and I asked John to go there just to be on the safe side, but I said, they're not going to let you speak, but just be there. They ended up asking him lots of questions and I felt really bad. And I was very upset because had they, I known that they were going to be asking questions, even though they told us, told me not to come because they weren't going to be asking me questions. And they told Jim the same thing, because they said that they would have us come when school committee and I could come, I would have gone. But in any case, they approved the bathroom renovations and they rejected the carpet replacement request. They approved the carpet renovate, I mean, the bathroom renovations and said that they felt that our, our projections were too low and asked us to get official quotes and to bring it back before the town meeting, so to ensure that we got enough money. So go figure. So we're actually, I've asked Archie and Andy to get official quotes so that we actually get the, you know, three official quotes, and I'll share that with the capital plan so that that can go forward. I don't know whether you all want to, you know, at this point, I'll stop for a second and let you speak to that. Do you want, do you want to do something about this? Do you want me to, as a school committee, do you want to address this?
In what way?
I mean, basically, they held a meeting, they really-
Oh, oh, I thought you meant on the bathroom renovations specifically.
No, the bathroom renovation's not a problem, but, you know, they held a meeting where, I know that Emery wanted to deal with the technology, you know, John's not here. I did talk to John about the carpet, you know, I, do we want to go back and say we want an op, do you, I guess, want to go back and say you want an opportunity to talk to capital plan about the two other items, or how do you want to handle this? Because Jim did speak to, did you want to talk about the conversation we had with Don?
Well, just that, yeah, if they wanted us there, we would, they were just to discuss internally and then we could come back. But I mean, if they already said they would maybe give more money for the bathroom renovations, then I would say if we just stick with that, put the carpet, let the carpet go.
Yeah.
If we can renovate as many bathrooms as possible, I think that'd be a win-win, because that's, that's an issue we hear from people who use the schools and the, and the community that, you know, looks like it was when the school opened.
Sure does.
So it's about time that we can update it, renovate it. That would be, I think it'd be a win-win.
Okay.
And I, I agree, especially not knowing what that number's going to be, and if our numbers are quite low compared to what we brought forward, what the numbers that come back than what we brought forward, that's going to make a big difference. My question is, when we say bathroom renovations, you know, you could think about, you know, the number we put forward covers paint or whatever, what, how much detail are we saying in these bathroom renovations?
Oh, I don't have it here, but I can tell you it's replacing the urinals, it's complete, it's replacing the tiles, it's replacing the stalls, it's steaming the, it's, it's fixing it up pretty well.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So for the technology piece, I would like to, first of all, I'm not sure I understand the reasoning behind not having school committee present when school items are discussed. I mean, at least, at the very least, school committee should have the opportunity to speak to these items, and obviously, there was no such opportunity. So I still am not sure why it is happening that way. But as far as technology is concerned, if it is indeed true that most other towns, if not all, are going through the capital planning committee for their technology expenditures, and based on the investment they were making, or the donations that we're receiving as far as the devices to use, that expense is going to be necessary, I would like to have, I would like to at least work with the school committee to put together the questions that we need to have answered before we go to the capital planning committee. Now, what is the, what is the benefit, what it's going to be used, if we don't have it, what are the drawbacks and all that? So we have all our answers and go and have a visit with the capital, capital planning committee.
I would recommend that the school committee do request it. That, I, I mean, I agree with Jim that we take the money and run, but I think it might be worthwhile to have a civil conversation with the, the capital plan committee, and it could be in a way to, you know, with, we're bringing our new interim superintendent as well, you know, but I think it's worthwhile. It just didn't feel right because I spoke and then Jim spoke to them, and then they went ahead and did the vote.
Well, I just feel that it's tough for those, nothing against those people in the committee, but they should be not the ones making the decision whether they agree with something or not.
That's correct.
They need more input.
They do.
And it should ultimately be the voters who make that decision. It might be a few people who can say, yeah, let's put that one in, but not this one.
Right.
It's just not.
Right.
And then they wonder why we don't take care of things in the community. It's because it's not the citizens, it's other people are making those decisions before it even gets to the citizen look. And that's, that's not the way it should be.
So at the capital planning committee, were other committees invited to speak on their articles? Or was it, no one spoke on their request, I should say, not articles?
I don't know, we'd have to see the minutes of the meeting, I don't know.
As I understand it, because I asked, I'd like to go, and I was told you can come, but you're not going to be allowed to speak.
So we can always invite them here. We could invite them to one of our school committee meetings instead of waiting to get invited to their meeting.
That's a very good idea.
Maybe we take a different approach and say, we would like to invite you to one of our meetings and the topic that we want to discuss is technology.
Okay.
In general. And, but I think we need what Emery has suggested, that we get our questions together, summarize what we, our needs truly are.
Okay, so I will have further conversations with Judy, so she, she knows how to kind of bring you to that place. And then maybe at your April meeting or before then, you know, between now and whenever, you'll be ready to have that.
Yeah, and I think we need some factual information, like Emery, you said that other towns go through the capital for technology. So it would be nice to have some of those facts, you know, how many area towns are doing that?
Can you get that information, Archie?
Yeah.
For technology specifically, are they going to the capital improvement?
Okay, all right.
Or planning, I should say.
So I just didn't want to move off of that one. Then with the, the budget projections, as you heard, you know, we're at this point, we haven't really moved off of the 560,000 as where we're at with the deficit gap. What, I, I've just begun, you know, you would think, would have thought, the way it sounds, you know, gone through so much, and really honestly, Judy came at 9:30 this morning, we met till about 11:30, and then she came back at, you timing me? At 3:30. So we've covered a lot already, but I intend on covering the budget at length, and obviously she, she has some folks who can fill her in some more. But our goal is to have, I will be sitting down with Dr. Hul and the administrators to review the budget, the proposals that we have had, the projections. My thought would be to have her review the timeline that I had presented and then revise it as necessary, and then to set up with you as a school committee, the next workshop meetings. Because at this point, as I said, I really don't have any more evening meetings left, but I think that we need, you, we need to have some meetings very soon. I know you're meeting now with the search and so forth, but there needs to be some meetings to, that need to happen before the end of this month, so that you can have some next conversations. And those conversations that you need to consider are fairly crucial. School choice seats. One of the things I'd like you to consider, that I think you need to consider is with reductions, and I know that you're considering this, but I, I felt, before I leave, I wanted to put out there, if with reductions, it'll impact the district's ability to attract school choice students. So if you make, if you make reductions in staffing, then class sizes are going to grow and, and folks are going to no longer want to attend, you know, be less attracted to attend our, our district. And that, right now, we're bringing, if you recall, we're bringing, this year, we have an additional $60,000 in revenue in school choice. So I think that it's a, it's a hard balance, and I think that when you are thinking about revenues and reductions, that you need to think about school choice in that. I, I know, I don't mean to be insulting, but I just needed to be able to put out, this is out here, when you're considering these items, to think about class size, this is really important, small class size has been something that I, I believe that has not only attracted our students for school choice, but it's also been crucially important in improving our instruction, especially in retention of students around, helping our students addressing response to intervention, preventing students from moving on forward to special education. And I know that sometimes looking at our class sizes and going up to 23 or 24, those are some of the conversations we've been having at the MSBA, you know, the, our building project. You know, folks have been asking, well, why can't we go to 23 or 24, or 25 or 26? And honestly, it, it is significant, especially when you are talking about the diverse needs of students. And when it's only one teacher with all those students, it is, we are able to, the teachers are able to meet those needs. And then the last thing I wanted to point out, when you're, when you're thinking about budget planning, I, I think we've all really appreciated, the administrative team in particular, and I have really appreciated the fact that the school committee has been very set in saying, we are not asking you to make cuts. We really are wanting to really think about ways in which we can look and advocate for additional funds from the town. But I really want to impress upon the school committee and the community as a whole about the fact that we are looking at a building project in the very near future and the impact of advocating for additional funds at this time, when we're already asking for 85,000 here. We may in fact get additional funds to support this budget currently for this summer, you know, in June, but then if we then go back again in the fall for a building project, the impact of that. You know, that are, those are all conversations that I think that you need to have. And the last, the last two items, I think that I'd love to, to have a conversation with you about, because I think it's a conversation you can have with me with, because I'm exiting and it'd be less threatening, and that is, I would strongly recommend that the school committee consider creating an ad hoc committee or, you know, a committee, fund a school committee, to look, to thoroughly review the pros and cons of regionalizing, and whether it's regionalizing, you know, at, at all aspects, either through educational programming, through central office services, whether we're talking about business management, transportation, whether we're talking about facilities management, central office personnel, any, any kinds of regionalizing or shared services with the town. Those are the things that I think that before we go into drastic cuts in the district, I think that those are the things that, or in addition to, as, as you're moving forward, I think that, that that needs to be considered as well, because I, and I think that needs to, that the sooner you sit down and begin to look at that as a committee, the sooner we can take, take it off or keep it on the table. But, you know, these are whispers in the community and people are afraid to pull, bring it out of the dark. And I think we need to bring it out of the dark and, and start talking about it and the pros and cons of it. talking about it, and the pros and cons of it. I certainly, if you want me to address that or answer any questions, but I, you know, there are so many ways of doing regionalization. You know, it doesn't need to be, you know, you can, you can do shared central office services, you could do, there's a many, 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 myriad of ways of doing that, there's, and I think that, you know, ad hoc committee.
Yeah, I would just say where we are in the budget process right now, you know, I don't know how effective ad hoc committee would be today to make an impact.
Not for this fiscal year.
Right, it would have to be the following.
No, right, but I'm suggesting that we enter into it to say, so that I think it would be a good faith effort if you were to say, "This is what we're doing, we need additional funding, but we've already started a committee, and we're looking at these things so that we're addressing, it could be addressed for future."
Yeah, okay.
Because I think that we've, you know, we've kind of like shied away from addressing that.
I would put up there, too, you know?
I would actually prefer not to have one answer. I mean, it's potentially, you know, regionalization is one conversation to have.
But it could be...
But if we can have something like a task force that looks at the future, you know...
Yeah.
Whatever.
And we're going to, we should, we need to have those conversations.
Yeah.
And part of the role that we have is what, looking at the strategic objectives of the district and, you know, that can be discussed in that context.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm saying is, I think that the time is now to start putting something out there and pulling together a committee to start taking out from the dark some of those whispers, like, you know, I've had people, "Well, I'm hearing that you're going to regionalize the high school," or, "I'm hearing that you're going to get rid of," and people are getting scared, and I think that might be contributing to losing some of our kids. So if we can, if we can say, "No, you know what? We're taking that, and we're putting it on the table, and we're looking at that. No decisions are being made because we're looking at that." That might stem some of the exodus of some of our kids.
Yeah.
You know? So that would be my only suggestion. So the last thing is, I just, I had, I then, so that was, that's my report. Any questions on that, and then I'm just going to give you reflections. That'll be five, 10 minutes. No, five minutes. Questions on the end of my, end of the year, my end of my career in Granby report.
So what I can say is, thank you very much for doing that. I think it was extremely well done. It really does summarize where we are today, you know, with the different programs that you've worked through and where we are with the budget, and even though that you're leaving and you're moving on, Izabelina, you know, you're not letting the ball drop.
I'm trying not to.
You're putting a plan in place. You really are coming up with some great thoughts and where we should be moving and...
Let's decide after we see the pictures.
No! I saw the pictures.
So, so I appreciate that.
Yeah.
We all do, yeah.
So definitely, many thanks.
Thanks, well, and that's it. It was, it did keep me up, it's been keeping me up at night, I've been trying, and thank you for bringing me in an interim with whom I can now start saying, "Okay, here you go. Here you go." So the first is, I had to put this up here. One thing upon my reflection, I figured out that Mother Nature is not my friend. I started in February 2011 with snowstorms, worries of snow on the roof, and guess what? I'm leaving with snowstorms and worries of snow on the roof and many, many incredible disasters and storms in between. Let's, my wish for you is that as I leave, Mother Nature will be happy, and she'll go back to be normal with the good weather, because that's the only thing I can think of, is that, you know, that, that, I'm the culprit, because that's what Kathy said the day I came here. She said, "It's all your fault. Weather was good before you came, and I'm leaving and weather is bad again," so...
Yeah, that will be on the agenda in April.
So, and then, you're right, Emery, I do have pictures, so I do have pictures, so let's see if I can do this correctly. Bear with me. So in my, in my reflection, I began to think about the fact that over the four years, I've made lots of friends. I began to think about the quality of our staff. We have some phenomenal, exceptional teachers in our district, and these are only just a few of the pictures that I was able to take, not Emery, but, so I don't have a bank of pictures. They're not all witches. They are queens, good witches of the east, but they are some quality folks that give up their time and are willing to go the extra mile. We have some beautiful children in our district, and we have made some fabulous, I've made some fabulous, fabulous friends. You heard me speak to that. Some little friends that I've been able to go out and visit that have just been starry-eyed and made me remember what it's like to be wishful thinkers, and I brought in new friends to the district as well. We brought joy to lots of folks with the help of my friends at different schools, and they brought us joy as well. It's been a lot of fun. It's been, I've been really proud of the staff and the children. I've incredibly enjoyed going out to visit the schools. It's been one of the most enjoyable parts, and I'll be honest with you, I worry about that that's the part of my job that I'm going to miss most, is being out with the children. It's one of the things I've enjoyed. I can't tell you how proud I am of the students in the Granby Public Schools. We have beautiful, beautiful students in Granby. They are so joyful, and they are so giving of their time. They come out during the weekend to celebrate. They are musical, they're talented. I've been able to enjoy and celebrate with them at times of, when they're, at times of art, artistic achievements. There's Ms. Karolowicz. I've been able to celebrate athletic successes with our students, and at no time have I been disappointed with the caliber of our students. It has been an absolute joy to be with our students, and you, as a school committee and as our administrator, should be very, very proud of our children and our students. In addition to that, they have given us every opportunity to also take, to be proud of them, even when it's taken an opportunity to stand up for what's right. They have not stopped to take that opportunity and actually done it right, and I know that one day, these little children are going to contribute something wonderful to our world and be the superheroes of tomorrow. So I want you to know that it has been a true joy to represent you all as your superintendent of schools, and I could not have asked for a better job. I know, Emery, that I cannot and will never be able to take the amount of pictures that you do every, every time you come out, but I don't need the pictures to have, to cherish the memories. They will be, the memories that I have will not only be in these pictures, but will always be in my heart, and I want to thank you all for that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. That was...
Thank you very much. That was great.
Thank you for taking the time and putting that together and taking those pictures over the years and, you know, you brought up about the snow and everything else, and I remember that October.
Yes.
And when trick-or-treating started in the school, so thank you very, very much. We truly appreciate it. So our next thing on the agenda, if we're to move on, is really, the next school committee meeting is April 6th, and unless we have something before, then we do have the meeting on March 16th to go over the vendor presentations, and between now and April, we could have some budget workshops or whatever, so we'll have to work through that. Okay, with that said, ready for adjournment? Do you have a motion?
Oh, yeah, you do it early when I leave, right?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.